Thank you for coming out on a beautiful Saturday afternoon. Great to be with you here. For those of you who have not been to our town meetings before, question per person, so we can get as many people as possible. Second, if you want to make a comment, if you can avoid making a speech, that will be appreciated by all of us. And third, if someone says something you disagree with strongly, we don't need to boo or hister or anything like that. I don't think I need to mention that, but once in a while, people get a little wad up. So, we're happy to have all of you, and we're happy to have some children here, too, some young people here. This is your meeting, anything at all. Yes, ma'am?
When will Congress begin to cut its own benefits before they cut those of the left portion? Health, pensions, salaries, you know, when are they going to start themselves?
Very good question. And in terms of healthcare, for example, we provide healthcare for all of us who are in Congress, all of our federal employees. We still have 39 million Americans who don't have healthcare coverage. And obviously, our priorities have to be, ought to be shifted. We, just as one example, we now have 23% of Americans' children who live in poverty. No other Western industrialized nation has anywhere close to that number. That's not an act of God. There's no divine intervention that says America's children have to live in poverty while in France, and Denmark, and Japan, and other countries that don't. It is flawed policy. It is a lack of attention to the things that we ought to pay attention to, our own priorities. Yes, ma'am?
Thursday, we've seen you sit in a face, I've always considered you a threat. Why have you refused to exempt Social Security from the balanced budget? Social Security, you know, is self-supporting, it doesn't contribute to the deficit, in fact, it has surplus even NASA deficit. Carol Mosley-Brown, your colleague, told me that she trusts that this Congress and future Congresses to protect Social Security. But what's your reason?
The question is, why was I not willing to have an exemption in the balanced budget amendment for Social Security? First of all, if I can just talk about the balanced budget amendment and its importance to the nation. We have now, for 26 years in a row, spent more money than we've taken yet. And a study by the New York Federal Reserve Bank from 1978 to 1988 said that we reduced the income of the average family by $2,500 during that period because of the deficit. And, you know, you link them, you're talking about substantial off. As late as 1986, the average American industrial worker was paid more per hour than that of any other country. Now, there are 13 countries that are ahead of us. We have slowed. And I would say, number one, the most important protection we can give Social Security is that we get a hold of the debt. If we continue, the President and Bob Myers, who was the chief actuary, or the chief financial officer for Social Security for many years, has said, "The most important thing to protect Social Security is the balanced budget amendment." Because if we do not have a balanced budget amendment, where we're headed is, as we pile up more and more debt, nations historically have done this. The debt gets so big that they just start to turn the presses over, what the economists call monetizing the debt. And we are headed, this happens historically in countries when you get around 9, 10, or 11%. Mexico got into trouble when, back a few years ago, it reached the 11%, and that started, really, then the shell became kind of hollowed. We are projected to go to 18%, far above what any nation's done on monetizing the debt. So, that's number one. Number two, I have to say, I think everything should be on the table. And I say that, and I have taken the stand, that we should not be reducing Social Security retirement. But while Social Security is running a surplus now, starting in the year 2012 or 2013, it starts to go in the other direction. And we should be planning now for that time. We shouldn't wait until we get, you know, two years away from that. And then, third, and perhaps most important, while it sounds fine, let's make an exemption of Social Security in the Constitution. The difficulty is, you can put welfare under Social Security. You can, you know, we can, that can be a massive loophole, since the word "security" is used, we could put defense spending in there. I think we are better in a Constitution, dealing in general principles, and not putting the details. But having said that, I have been one who, over a long time, has been fighting to protect Social Security funds, and I'm going to continue to.
Yes? Have you yet to hear any attempts to cut the defense budget?
All right. Question is, I've yet to hear attempts to cut the defense, but we have slowed it down a little. Real candidly, we are spending far too much in defense. We are, we are now spending about as much in defense as the rest of the world combined. And the world has changed dramatically since we were in this Cold War trouble with the Soviet Union. I served overseas in the Army, I'm proud of them so. I want an adequate defense that is mobile, that can meet different kinds of situations. But some of us had a meeting Thursday with the Secretary of Defense, talking about the possibility of relying more on reserves and National Guard, and not so much on a full-time group. Plus, we are spending money on equip, we're still buying B-2 bombers. What is a B-2 bomber designed for, at $2 billion a crack? It is designed to penetrate Soviet radar. Now, there are only two problems. There is no Soviet Union anymore, and there's no radar there anymore. You know, but, and this is where pressure groups come in, the defense manufacturer push for it, the unions involved push for it, you know, you have all kinds of groups that are pushing for it. But this is why we need the restraint of a constitutional amendment that says, you know, "We're going to have to make some tough choices." And we just can't do everything we're allowed.
Can we get back to Social Security? Why, why is the trust fund out of budget?
Why is what?
Why isn't the trust fund, Social Security, out of budget?
Okay.
And why aren't we having investment in investments?
Okay. Two questions. One is, why isn't the trust fund off of the budget? And number two, why isn't it invested? Number one, and I regret to say, this is a, and I say this is a Democratic, Democratic President did this. During the Vietnam crisis, we were starting to go into the red. And unlike the Korean crisis, when we got into the Korean War, Harry Truman said, "Let's increase taxes to pay for it." And believe it or not, we went through the whole Korean War without harboring any increase in the deficit. We got into the Vietnamese War, and Lyndon Johnson saw that deficit starting to grow, and he was afraid he couldn't get a tax increase to pay for it. And so, he wanted it to look better, and he said, "Let's take Social Security and make it part of the budget." And that was done, is called the unified budget. My belief is that ought to be off of the budget. I have co-sponsored legislation to do that. And now, let me just say, when it's off of a budget, I don't suggest that we don't have a responsibility. And that's why I favor looking at those long-term problems now. We, with, by making some small adjustments now, we can protect Social Security well into the next century, assuming that we get a hold of the deficit problem. That's, that's the big threat. But the, by having, let me just mention two examples. We might want to increase the FICA tax by half a percent. We might say, everyone who is retired now continues at the present, but we might, one month a year, increase the age requirement for retirement by 12 years. We're living longer. When Social Security passed, believe it or not, the average American lived to be 58 years old. Hard to believe. We now live to be 76 on the average. And the quality of life is much better. I'm 66, you know, I'm healthy, I can do a lot of things. Yes, ma'am?
I understand. I know a lot of other milk producers. Would you like to know about milk production?
About what?
Milk, whether it comes from cows subjected with RVST or RVT. And I think we should provide a bit of information to make our population about this milk, and not to give the public that information in review of North Dakota House. And my president, you support federal legislation that would allow milk producers in grocery stores to label and otherwise inform the public that their milk and milk products come from cows that are free from RVST injections?
Okay. The question is about cows that are supplied with the RVST injection, and should people be notified about that? Let me say, number one, and you may differ with me on this, I do have a great deal of confidence in the Food and Drug Administration. I've worked with them a lot. I believe that it is for most Americans' sake. I do believe, however, that we should have things labeled, because there are some things that are not safe for some people, but may be safe for most of us. That is true on a lot of them. So, I do believe in the labeling that you call for. Yes, ma'am?
I'm a member of the American Party, and I'm very concerned about the health of the country. And I'm a member of the Republican Party, and what is the necessity of, you know, it's not the government's responsibility? There's no enforcement, there's no federal enforcement, because members of the American Party struggle to justify, and there's nothing that can be done, very difficult to do a test, because to use contact, especially your own, particularly by your own hand, to your, and I know it's probably going to be ten times the time, you know, by time every, it's been a year since we've tried.
All right. Monica or Eric, will you touch base with this woman, and get her name and address, and we will follow through? But let me, the question is about child support. She is a single mother, not getting child support, or not getting it adequately. Her former husband, I gather, has crossed state lines. This is a major problem. Let me just add, I think it is a problem not only in terms of people who have been married, but I think also, we have to get the message across to young people, to young males, that they have a responsibility when they father a child, and that their, and that responsibility is a very clear financial responsibility that the government is going to follow up on. We have improved the laws on this. The problem is the enforcement of the laws. It is not so much the laws themselves. We now have the IRS getting involved to some extent, and believe it or not, we are now collecting about $4 billion a year more than we were a few years ago. But we still have a long way to go. And I think, I'll try and help with your specific case, but the larger picture is, we're still not doing as much as we should. One of the differences, and I understand the problems of prosecuting attorneys, you know, you have somebody who's in the store, or somebody who isn't paying child support, it's, you know, you can guess as prosecutor which one you'd go after, and they have limited resources. But this is an area where somehow we have to find the tools to do a better job. Yes, sir?
First, I'd like to really commend you, and thank you for your years of service.
Thank you.
I'm concerned that some others have mentioned with the balanced budget, I really fear that what happens if that passed, is that some of these very hard-won social programs are the ones that are touched, instead of the funds and so on.
All right. The question is, and you, if you're wearing a sweatshirt that says "Family Footsteps", and I should introduce my wife, who's around here, too. Where did she disappear to? Right back there. All right, okay. He has concern that the social programs aren't going to be heard if we have a balanced budget amendment. And I cannot give you a guarantee that they're not going to be heard. But I would point out, Congressman Joe Kennedy of Massachusetts, who is one of the chief sponsors in the House, made a great speech, in which he pointed out, "What is happening now is the social programs are getting squeezed while interest grows." And this is our problem. This year, we will spend $339 billion as our gross interest expenditure. We will, this year, spend 11 times as much on interest as education. We will spend 22 times as much on interest as foreign economic assistance. We will spend twice as much on interest as all of our poverty programs put together. And what is happening, for example, if you adjust for inflation, between 1970 and 1993, the average payment to a family on welfare dropped 40%. During those same years, the federal government's expenditure for interest went up 1,715%. It is very clear what is happening. You know, interest, for which we get nothing, other than higher interest rates, and that's just squeezing out all that we're doing. Fiscal year 1949, we spent 9% of our federal budget on education. This year, we're spending 2% of our federal budget on education. We did, now, does that mean when we have a balanced budget, if we get a balanced budget amendment? And I, my, the difficulty, incidentally, is, it will force us to make some unpopular decisions. We're going to have to step on your toes. And if it were popular to balance the budget, we have done it a long time ago. The last, the argument against it is, and we just went through them all, "We can balance the budget without a constitutional amendment." That was the argument used in 1986, when we lost by one vote. The federal debt then was $2 trillion. We just heard the same argument, we again just lost by one vote. Now, the federal debt is $4.8 trillion, more than double. And if we wait for another nine years to bring it up, the same arguments will be used, the programs you believe in are going to be cut back more, and interest will grow even more. Now, it does change this, and let me give you an illustration. Back three years ago, I sponsored a bill for long-term care with a half percent increase in Social Security to pay for. Two of my colleagues in the Senate came to me and said they really liked my bill, they would like to be co-sponsors if I would just drop the tax to pay for it. We can do that now. We can give you more services and lower taxes and just pile up the deficit. What, where my colleague, for example, Orrin Hatch is my, and I are the chief sponsors in the Senate. Orrin Hatch and I probably differ on whether or not we should have a long-term care program with a half percent increase in Social Security to pay for. That's perfectly proper. That's where we ought to argue. We should not argue on the fact that if we're going to have the program, we have to pay for it. That, it seems to me, is essential. And that means that people who are for education and other things that I believe in strongly, they're going to have to come in and not only be for spending the money, that's always easy. You're also going to have to come in and say, "Well, let's reduce the defense spending," or "Let's increase the cigarette tax," or something else. We can't continue to ruin the future of our children. The General Accounting Office says, "If we balance the budget by the year 2002, two decades later, the average American will have an increased standard of living adjusted for inflation of 36%." That's a huge increase. If we continue to stumble along as we are now, we will, at best, maintain where we are now, probably decline. So, the choices are, you know, they're very severe. Yes?
The Student Senate here is very concerned about cut to education. It's going to affect most of the members of the Student Senate, and we were just wondering your position, and how are you going to customize or how to customize?
All right. And you're a member of the Student Senate?
Yes, well, at the whole.
And you will forgive me for pointing out that you're not 18 to 22. The, one of the great things about community colleges is, we are bringing in and giving opportunity to a lot of people who didn't have them before. One of the things that I'm proud of, or when I was in the state legislature, was helping to create the community college system in the state of Illinois. There were a few rules I'd like to change back there when I was in the legislature, but it has been a great thing. And I have to give credit to California. What we did was, we just copied the California system. But this, this school is a good illustration of it. The question is, what about education? I think we have to continue to invest in education, and I'm going to be doing everything I can to fight for it. Let me add, however, just as on the balanced budget, we're going to have to rethink where we're spending money, what we're paying in taxes and other things. I think in the field of education, we're going to have to do some rethinking. Let me just give you one example. You go to school in elementary school or secondary school in Japan, you go 243 days a year. You go to school in Germany, you go 240 days a year. You go to school in the United States of America, you go 180 days a year. If, well, the first, the basic question is, can we learn as much in 180 days as they do in 240 or 243? The answer is obvious. Why do we go only 180 days? Well, in theory, it is so our children can go out and harvest the crops. Now, I don't know too many children in Powhatan, Barrington. And, you know, I live in rural southern Illinois, McCanday, Illinois, population 402. They don't even do it down there. You know, we have to adjust to a very different world. I got $75 billion in the last budget to pay a little bit to some schools that might move from 180 days to 210. That still leaves us way behind other countries. But it's interesting, by the time you graduate from the 12th grade, if you move from 180 to 210, that's the equivalent of two additional years of school. You know, if we want to compete with Japan and Germany, we're going to have to do, we're going to have to invest more in education, that means paying teachers more, demanding higher standards, doing what we can to help students, but we're also going to have to adjust from our old ways. That means days of school, that means curriculum. We're the only nation in the world where you go to grade school and not learn a foreign language. That was, you know, that was fine 40 years ago. Today, if you want to sell to another language, to another country, you have to speak the language of your customer. We can't speak the languages of our customers, anyway. I don't want to get going on that, but I thank you for being on the Student Senate. And the bad news for you is, that's how I started. You're not careful, you'll end up being a student.
If you make a place of case for your fellow senators not being able to be tried to cut the deficit, it seems to me that a very similar argument might be made in favor of passing an ERA amendment to the Constitution to protect women's rights. If we can't tough them to balance the budget, I don't think that we can tough them to protect women's rights either. And I'd like to see you reintroduce an ERA amendment.
Yes, I favor an ERA, the question is on the ERA constitutional amendment. I favor it, I have co-sponsored it. And it is not only a matter of trusting lawmakers, it's how the courts rule, it's a great many things, and plus, in principle, I think it is sound. And all of, most of the horror tales, and I have to say, I haven't had a question on the ERA for a while.
But you're a lame duck, you're in an ideal position.
Well, I have to add, you would, right now, to get a two-thirds vote of the Senate and the House might be extremely difficult. Way back there.
What is the current situation with the healthcare? Last I heard, they interviewed Senator Dole, and after the last Senate thing, and he said, "Yeah, we should look at that in four or five years down the road." I'm about to be one of the 39 million, 59 years old, with a heart attack, go out and try and buy insurance. No way. There should be a way the government can provide, if they had to go after the booze companies and the cigarette companies. Provide, I don't want it for nothing, I'll pay for it, but I can't pay $1,000 a month. I can't do it, it's more my house payments. It's beyond my means. I heard it saying, who's the great senator that took off of Waxman?
There's no need to investigate the tobacco industry, you know? Who's taking care of him real good? You know, tobacco industry, they're causing most, a lot of the grief with, with the alcohol.
All right. Well, let me, let me just say, I strongly believe in protecting all Americans. We're the only Western industrialized country that doesn't protect all of its citizens. You're, you're talking about, and when you said $1,000 a month, as you mentioned your situation, my mind clicked off about $1,400 a month. And, you know, if you can get it for $1,000 a month, you're fortunate. But it just, it is ridiculous that if you're in the situation you're in, and the last thing you need is more stress, that if you live in Canada, you know you'd be protected. If you live in Italy, you know you'd be protected, and, you know, and the, and the other countries. I think it is important. If we were to start off with a system that says, "We're going to have health insurance for people, and it's going to be voluntary on the part of employers, and if you're an employer, you can pay for your employees." And then, if you volunteer to pay for your employees, you have to help pick up the tab for the other employers who don't pay for them. You know, we'd say, "That is a ridicule system." That is precisely the system we have today. And it is unfair to employers who are paying while others don't pay for them. And for small businesses, we, the bill that came out of the committee in which I served, there are two committees of yours, we had it, so that if you had, if you employed one to six people, you had to pay 1% of your payroll. to six people, you had to pay one percent of your payroll, six to twelve, two percent, you know, it was graduated, so that a small business could handle this. But I just, I go through this all the time. You know, I can't spend a weekend in Illinois without people coming up to me with this heart-wrenching story. I was down in Hennepin County, in Hennepin and Putman County, and this woman came up to me carrying her child, obviously disabled, and she said, "My husband had insurance, but we exceeded the cost. We have now sold our home. We owe sixteen thousand dollars. What can you do to help us?" And I had to tell her, "I can't do anything." You know? Why shouldn't she be protected? All of us ought to help, although on that, and it is through the cigarettes we smoke or the glass of beer we drink, or if it's a tax on our income, however, somehow, we ought to protect all Americans. Yes, ma'am?
Illinois retired teachers are not covered under social security. Right now, my husband is paying four-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars a month. I turn sixty-five later this year, and it jumps around six-hundred. But the bad thing is, in May, Illinois, the Blue Cross Blue Shield Plan is going to be broken, and it will jump much more than that. Well, some retired teachers are earning only a thousand a year, our, their income right now is over a million. I don't know what to say.
This is a specific state situation affecting retired teachers, but, you know, I can, you tell one story, somebody else tells, you know, they tear your heart out, these stories. And nobody can tell me that a country that can get a man to the moon, that can do all kinds of other things, that we can't take care of people and their health needs. Now, will there have to be some adjustments? Yes, for example, Canada, three-quarters of physicians are primary care physicians, general practitioners, and pediatricians. In the United States, three-quarters of our physicians are specialists. We're going to have to make some adjustments in some of these things, and real candidly, while general practitioners under a health care program probably going to make a little more money, specialists probably going to make a little less money. And we're going to have to make some adjustments. We're going to have to do more on prevention. We're not good on prevention, as many nations, cigarettes about the only area where we're good on prevention, but we really have to be doing much better. Yes, sir?
Yes, I'm, this is a subject near and dear to my heart because I am a physician involved in preventive medicine and environmental medicine. And a couple issues, number one, when this whole thing came up in Congress for catastrophic health coverage under Medicare, people nearly lynched Representative Ross Tocowski down in Chicago, and therefore, it looked like shortly thereafter, both Democrats and Republicans caved in to quote "the will of the people." I'm hearing a lot of mixed messages, and therefore, I support, I've come around a long way, I've supported medical savings accounts because it issues, it addresses the issues of freedom of choice, the physician, and the freedom of choice of patient. It gets more, it gets more back to the issues of trying to reinforce the old doctor-patient relationship. I'd like some comments about the MFAs, please.
First, you're right when you say there are differences of opinion, there are differences of opinion here in this audience, I can assure you, on it. I'm not opposed to medical savings accounts, but that's frankly not the answer. Those retired teachers you're talking about, you can't get a medical savings account to take care of that kind of a situation.
Convert them.
Well, I am not opposed to it as a supplement, but I think we have to have some basic protection. I also believe in the freedom of choice, and incidentally, that is, even under a present situation, that is declining the freedom of choice, as you probably know, under HMOs and other things. And there was so much misinformation put out on the health care plan. Newsweek magazine said four-hundred million was spent on, to defeat the health care plan. And people would come up to me and say, "I'm opposed to the Clinton health care plan because I like my doctor." Well, you know, they were convinced that somehow they were going to lose their position, that we didn't have freedom of choice. Four-hundred million is more than the two presidential candidates spent combined in the last two presidential elections. You know, it's just, there are people, and we're talking about a one-point-four-trillion-dollar industry, and there are people who profit a great deal from the present industry and who don't want change. I'm not opposed to anyone profiting. I want to pay physicians well. I want to see that pharmaceutical companies make money and so forth, but I also want to see that we protect all of our people. The gentleman back there mentioned he's no longer going to be covered. I don't know whether he's losing his job or what the situation is, but that can happen to anyone here. You know, unless you're over sixty-five. And while I have a great deal about people condemning government getting involved in the health care area, I have not seen a single bill introduced to get rid of Medicare. You know, I, and it's been very interesting, people, and all kinds of horrible stories about the Canadian system. It's very interesting, the poll up in Canada recently showed three percent of the people in Canada would prefer the American health care system to the Canadian health care system. Yes, ma'am? Can you speak just a little, I have a little bit of a hearing problem.
By the way, thanks for all your service.
Well, I thank, and thank you for coming.
That's been a month ago, my father died in a nursing home in the city of Illinois. In the last week, he's having a lot of pain on his feet, and the nursing home staff was more preoccupied with the liability for being responsible for my dad's death than they were for being concerned about comforting my dad into his last day. We were not adequately informed about the management options available to my dad. I feel like my dad was treated less than a criminal victim, the life sentence, or death sentence. They were more concerned about those kind of people than my dad. I feel like terminally ill people should have a right to be informed of their options if the nursing home is unknown to offer them, and nursing homes, if their nurses still they would be liable in some way. They should have informed us about options for half, and other places, to get dad his medication, so that he could get down in peace. Finally, when we found out my dad had less than twenty-four hours to live, and he was finally medicated and did down in peace, the last week, he was pleased and started from really tied up with him, only because of the nursing home. I feel like there was a more in favor of the nursing home in their case, they were more concerned about taking care of their liabilities in the midst of a terminal patient, and they were concerned about comforting my dad. I was hoping that maybe somehow, if you passed a legislation that would give nursing homes a responsibility to inform the patients that are trying to, and they don't feel like they're being respected.
Thank you for, her comment is about, her father died in a nursing home and in the last week, did not receive the kind of care he should, and was not told the kind of options that should have been told. We have generally left nursing home regulation to the states. We are at the federal level, providing some information now to let people know the quality of the nursing home, and so that you have some, some feel. Let me just add, this is a problem that is going to grow. We're living longer, fortunately, most of us will never have to go to nursing homes, but some of us will, and we ought to be looking at cost factors and quality factors. And let me add, and this was not the case in your father, but about thirty percent of the people who go to nursing homes don't really have to go to nursing homes. If we had some form of community daycare, if we had some limited at-home services, what happens is, mom and dad are, you know, they're getting in their eighties, and the kids live in Indianapolis or some other, someplace else, and dad suffers a stroke, and mom is getting kind of frail, and the kids are worried that mom is going to hurt herself while she's taking care of dad, and so they take dad to a nursing home. If you could have a little bit of at-home care to help with, someone coming in to help with just bodily functions like bathing someone, and helping on just some minimal tasks, it would be much, much better for those people and for everyone. I think we can work out better answers. Yes?
Hi. I'm going to call you, you understand your point, you'd be thankful if that lost you.
Well, I thank you. I am going to be retiring, and, not retiring in the sense that I'm going to quit working or quit standing for the things I believe in, but I see, real candidly, too many of my colleagues in the Senate who stay on too long. You know, I think you should quit while you're enjoying it, while you're feeling good, and I think you owe that to the, to yourself, your family, and to the people of your state and the people of the nation. But I can assure you, I'm not going to become a lobbyist, and I'm not going to just go out in Florida and play golf. I'm going to, I'm going to continue to be active in some way, but not as a candidate.
I'm glad to hear that. I have a concern with medical devices and statutes that are illegally, rapidly distributed, selling, and the frequency of use of implanted devices that are not strictly legal. One such company has backed the investigation out. The FDA is refusing to practice this company despite a history of products that have been illegal, ineffective, and that harm people. As a result of that, you have people that are legally disabled, you have the people who are happy to go into social security visibility, welfare, you have people who are happy to go to spend additional medical costs, and I think the FDA should enforce the law. And I'd like to...
All right, well, I will take this along, I serve on the committee that has jurisdiction over FDA. I might, I might add, the FDA itself does not enforce the law, but the FDA, when there's a violation of the law, reports it to a US attorney who has to make a decision, but...
Definitely investigated by the FDA and made up with the prosecution.
All right. Well, I will, and you have your name and address in here?
Both of ours.
Okay, I will get back to you on that. And if I can turn this over to Mike or Eric, yes, sir?
I'm one of many who has encouraged companies like that. And as that gentleman adds, when is the legislature going to be on the floor again? Is it going to be four years like Bob told us that, or are you going to go on a non-facile?
All right, well, I just made a speech in the Senate a few weeks ago, can you hold on this, your mother? I've got, believe it or not, after all the hubbub about health care last time, we didn't even actually have a final vote on the health care. And I have told my colleagues, even if it doesn't pass, I want to see we get a health care vote, so we let people know where everyone stands. And it may be that we're going to have to move incrementally now, because of what happened in the last election. For example, one of the things that I've mentioned as a possibility that won't help you in your situation, but to say, "All pregnant women and all kids up to the age of six are going to be covered." That at least would be a start toward getting the kind of coverage that we should. But if, and you mentioned that you can't get insurance coverage, you have a serious health problem, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. And my guess is, we've just heard from two people, my guess is, we can go around this audience, and we would find a lot more are in this situation. They're your neighbors, they don't talk about it. It's kind of a personal thing. But it is there, and it is a real drag on our economy. A high percentage of the personal, it's not corporate bank purchases, but a high percentage of personal bank purchases are caused by health-related problems. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, with a global opinion here, I know that this issue is standing, and the largest percentage of employees are part-time or temporary, and one of the things that conducts forces in negotiations is always healthcare. And there's still rather a higher rate of time employees, of time staff, there are many, a lot of them, because of the cost of that, and they're extremely concerned about the right of cost of that. And I feel, I'm sure, that it's the same in private sector, that that, again, workplace, people cannot get, which I know many people are on, the effect of these programs, the hands of campus, which is eight or nine sections, when a four or five-section loan would be complicated for a time, and earning a profit between one fourth and one third of sales, and not getting any healthcare.
All right, this is another problem with the health care. Let's just say, in, I don't know, the situation here, but let's just say, the teachers organization here negotiated that you would have health care coverage, and, but it does not apply to part-time employees. This is true for many kinds of private and public situations. And so, we, what has happened is, we have seen a very significant growth in the number of part-time people. And when I say part-time, they may be working thirty-two hours a week, but they're part-time, and so that people don't have to pay health insurance. If, if we had health insurance for everyone, then Harper College could decide, we're going, who they're going to employ, and not have a health care penalty in terms of employing people. Yes, ma'am?
I would like to know, when is our government going to stop punishing the people that have a little more than the others? We pay taxes forever, and now, in the health care, three years ago, that passed, and then it was abolished. We would have to pay immediately, on the bottom of the line, after our taxes, twelve-hundred dollars extra for those that have not, and then it would graduate yearly more and more. In other words, I should go on welfare. Why did I work sixty-some years, seven days a week, to be punished because now I don't need the government to support me? And I'm a product of nineteen-thirty depression, so I know what it is, not to have a dollar and to have. Government didn't give us one slice of bread. Now, everybody, welfare, welfare, where's the welfare? We better do something about the teenage mothers. Are we responsible for their children? I thought the parents are responsible for each child, child. I am, and I'm responsible. Let's talk about, let's see, what's important about this?
All right. Let me, did you hear the, the comment is about welfare and the health care plan called for seniors paying more, and the, and the issue of teenage mothers. The, let me just say, in terms of those who, of paying more on the health care bill, that did not go to help others. That went to see that seniors would be covered for prescriptions. That is a very heavy responsibility for seniors. Now, it doesn't mean that every dollar would be covered, but it would, that's what, in terms of senior citizens, it went for senior citizens, not for non-senior citizens. In terms of welfare, I strongly favor and overhaul the welfare system. And you'll forgive me, you're old enough along with me, since you mentioned the thirties.
That's right.
To remember the WPA.
And I'm fed up with it.
Okay, well, I, you and I may differ all day. Well, you and I may differ on this. I favor something like the WPA, where you say to people, I'm introducing legislation that says, you can be on welfare five weeks. After that, you have to go four days a week at some project that local people select. And the fifth day, you have to be out trying to find a job in the private sector. Four days you work at the minimum wage, not a lot of money, about $535 a month. But then screen people, say, come in, if they can't read and write, get them into a program.
WPA was a failure, Senator.
Pardon?
WPA was a failure. He wants to establish collectives and force people to work.
Let me just, let me just say, I differ with you slightly on WPA. It's very interesting. We have, not only do we have all kinds of lodges and schools and all kinds of things built, 1.5 million adult Americans learned how to read and write under the WPA. We had plays produced, we had people... When I was about 10 or 11 or 12, I read Richard Wright's book, Black Boy. And it just, it just moved me. I didn't know until years later, he learned to become a writer as part of a WPA project. Arthur Miller, who wrote Death of a Salesman, learned how to write as part of a WPA project. So, you know, we're all going to have different, but I think the big point, and I'm getting a signal from my staff, and we've got to move on to Lyons Township next. But I think the big point is, you have to give people pride in themselves, hope. We're too often not doing that. Let me give you an example, and I'm going to get the facts wrong if there are reporters here, they don't take my figures, but when I was in the house, deep southern Illinois, we had the Shawnee National Forest down there, and they needed a new ranger station. And they said they didn't have the money. So I got the forest people and the welfare people, and I think it was the plumbers' union, the carpenters' union, and the painters' union together. And I said, "How about going ahead? We'll hire union people to be supervisors, we'll take people who are in welfare to help do it." And I think something like 74 people worked at least one day on this, and we ended up with union jobs that we wouldn't have had otherwise. We got something built for less money. But I think the most important, and incidentally, every one of the 74 people got a private sector job. But I think the most important thing of all, and I can't prove this, I have to believe all 74 people drive by there today and say with pride, "I helped to build that." People need pride in themselves. You don't get that from just staying at home and collecting the check. I see all these other hands, and I apologize to all of you.
And I think the proposed 95% budget, there's changes to the structure of early childhood programs under individual, particularly gap, which will demonstrate early childhood services across the nation. Particularly, there's no funding for preschool, special ed, not earmarked anymore, we can buy, we all go into the pot, and there's tax caps going out around students, these types of programs, or any type of block, almost like earmarked.
All right. Well, ma'am, the question is, on the preschool program for young people with disabilities, the suggestion is that they all be put in part of a block grant that would be sent to the state. Block grants sound good in theory. My experience is, they are not good things. Now, there may be some areas where you can do it. But my guess is, if we made a block grant to the state and said, "You do with it what you want," a lot of those programs would just be lost. We did this in some areas of education a few years ago, including school library programs. The school library programs were funded on the average 6% by federal funds. Those school library programs have just, you know, they just disintegrated. During the whole depression, not a single library closed in this country. Just in the last few years, half the school libraries in California have closed. You know, I think, you know, if there are programs that we shouldn't be involved in, we shouldn't be involved in it. But a program like that, to help young people with disabilities, you know, I just think it's absolutely essential that we go ahead with it. Let me thank you all again, very, very much, for coming out. Make it real brief, that we're... Thank you, Steve, for standing up. I can't tell you what's happening.
I know, it's March 22nd.
What is your first name?
David McCullough. He's a great guy, yeah.
Bill Claire, that's what I was saying, that you agreed with me, so we got scheduled. David McCullough quoted in the Sunday Tribune, this past Sunday, saying, "Sherman's been saying that for two years, we have no interest in him."
Yeah, no, I'm willing to be with you, you mentioned it, Mike, we'll work it out. Thank you, Ben. What is your name?
I'm Dave, I'm on...
Oh, you want, yeah, yeah. I was hoping I could steal this from up here. Thank you. What's your name? I'm happy to see you. And what is your name? Well, I'm happy to see you.
He's saying about Congress, but he came to...
What is your name?
Eleanor.
Happy to see you.
I'm a senior citizen who wants to commend you on your balanced budget.
Well, I thank you. What is your name?
Roger Englath.
Roger, I thank you.
I was trying to get to see you in Washington, about another minute or so.
All right. Oh, you bet. Yeah. Okay. What is your name?
Catherine.
Catherine, I thank you.
I'd like to see the rest of the tort record for vengeance.
Well, I think some sensible, I don't know with a vengeance, but I think some sensible changes in tort record laws.
Vengeance, I mean, in cases due to damage to the plaintiff, and the lawyers get nothing.
Well, I don't know about...
The reward should go to reduce...
But there ought to at least be restrictions. You know, in some cases, lawyers get 50, 60%.
I know that, and that's why I'm totally mad about it.
Bruce Peters from Palestine, I would like to congratulate you on your efforts to get the balanced budget.
Well, I thank you.
And I just want to encourage you to vote against the Henry Foster Act, in light of the situation with Dr. Helmer, President Clinton, and the Department of Defense.
He will be coming before our committee, and we will, we will be questioning him carefully.
Steve, we'll nail her last one. See if we can walk and...
Yeah, you bet, you bet.
Jean Duval, Jean, you're fine.
Very happy to see you again.
Thank you.
How are you?
I'm fine.
What's your name?
Bill Brewer.
Happy to see you.
I'll send you a copy.
And I would like to send you a letter.
Okay. What is your name?
Lori Thompson.
Happy to see you. Very happy to see you.
Just want to say thank you again.
Oh, I thank you. What is your name?
Joe Taylor.
Joe, very happy to see you. Very happy to see you.
Thank you.
Well, I think, I think there is still a chance of doing, because, you know, we need one vote, and I have to say, it's an uphill fight, because, you know, all the votes are so visible. But I think there is a chance yet that we may be able to pick up one more vote.
Joe Dillinger, Concord Coalition, thanks for the work on the balanced budget today.
Concord Coalition has been great. What is your name?
Joe Dillinger.
Paul Song, District Magister. Very happy to see you, Joe.
Thank you for your...
And I see you have Pete Peterson's book.
I understand your position, but if you're...
Yeah.
If you're concerned about the balance budget...
Yeah. We would have, but we would have asked for a...
You know, you have to... In New York State, they have dormitory authorities and everything else to get around this.
Yeah.
And the federal government can do it, too.
To designate one program, and then let Congress do everything that they want to do to that program. How are you doing? It's great to see you again. I see Kevin Junior every once in a while. You look marvelous. Yeah. It is great to see you. Yeah. Been too long.
I know.
Yeah. Well, thank you. And when I, yeah. Next time you come out and see him, stop in, will you? All right.
Senator, no more than 80, and the rest. I look you, I try to get a little more.
I'm sorry. Okay. What is your name?
My name is Bob Allen.
Bob Allen.
I wrote a letter to you.
How are you feeling these days, having somebody there?
Well, I think a religious act is like religion or a lot of other things.
Do you see hope? I don't know whether it's DC or...
I made a talk last night, the library making me cry.
No. How are you doing? Good to see you.
I just, oh, oh, we can't hear you too.
We see Kevin Junior every once in a while. He stops by. Is, he does not have a job right now?
No, he just breaks a basketball game, waiting tables.
Don't you have a...
We know.
We have anything right now, but I'm sure why...
Very proud.
Have Kevin come in and talk to me.
I know.
If he stops in and sees her, I didn't realize he was out of job. You had him come in and talk to me.
No one ever say...
You bet.
Bill Renshaw.
How are you doing?
Okay, I'm a photographer.
I know, that's why I was at your place in Washington, during our...
That's right, that's right. But you do.